Good morning, everyone. So we have a full list of bills today, seven to be exact. And we're going to hear all the sale of properties at a time. So when we call on the agencies, if you could give your report for all five sale of properties, even though we're going to vote on them individually, at least we'll get all of the testimony out of the way for the agencies and that will kind of expedite some things. So, welcome to the virtual hearing this morning of Taxation Finance Economic Development And attendance, we have myself, Chair of the Committee, Vice President of the Council, and Representative of the Sixth District. We also have Danielle McCray, Vice Chair of the Committee and Representative of the Seventh, I mean Second District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have Councilman Edward Rysinger, Member of the Committee and Tenth District.
Here, Madam Chair.
We also have Councilman Eric Costello, Member of the Committee and the Eleventh District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we also have Councilman Robert Stokes, Member of the Committee and Twelfth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Go 12th District!
We also have Mr. Kalen Young, Representing the Council President's Office.
Morning. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we also have Dominic McGally, Also representing the Council President's Office. I also see Matt Stegman, Representing the Mayor's Office.
There, Madam Chair.
And looking to see if there's anyone else representing the Mayor's Office. Okay? Oh, I'm sorry. We have five sale of properties. The first one is Bill Number 20-0576. Sale of property, former bids of a 13-foot alley and a 20-foot alley. Bear with me because I'm going to go through all five descriptions at once before we start with the testimony. For the purpose of authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale, all its interests in certain parcels of land known as the former bed of the 13-foot alley extended from East Biddle Street northerly 80-foot to a 20-foot alley and the former bed of a 20-foot alley extending from North Washington Street easterly to 41.5 feet, more or less, laid out in the rear of the properties known as NOS.2000 through 2030, East Biddle Street, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. We also have Bill Number 20-0579. Sale of property, the former bed of a 10-foot alley, for the purpose of authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale, all its interests in a certain parcel of land known as the former bed of a 10-foot alley bounded by Edding Street, available with alley, West Lafayette Avenue, and West Landville Street, no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. We also have Bill Number 20-0602. Sale of property, 4701 Greenspring Avenue, AKA former Dr. Roland Patterson School, Number 082, for the purpose of authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale, all its interests in certain property located at 4701 Greenspring Avenue, AKA former Dr. Roland Patterson School, Number 082, Block 4760, Lot 001, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. We also have Bill Number 20-0585. Sale of property, Lake Clifton Senior High School, Number 40, for the purpose of authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale, all its interests in certain property known as the former Lake Clifton Senior High School, Number 40, located at 2801 St. Lo Drive, Block 4199, Lot 009, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. And also finally, Bill Number 20-0586. Sale of property, Lake Clifton Gate House, for the purpose of authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale, all its interests in certain property known as the former Lake Clifton Gate House, located at 2803 St. Lo Drive, Block 4199, Lot 008, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. All of these bills were sponsored by Council President on behalf of the administration. And then we'll start with agency reports. And I'll go down the list and start with the Department of Finance.
Good morning, Chairman.
Remember to report out, remember to report out on all the, all five bills at once when your department is called. Who's representing Department of Finance today?
This is Mara James for the Department of Finance.
Hi, Mara.
Hi, how are you doing this morning?
Good.
Good. Great. So, the Department of Finance does not oppose any of these sale of property bills. Two things to note are just that for the, for 200602 and 200585, the sale of these properties will have a benefit for the General Fund in terms of expense. The DGS, the Department of General Services, spends funds to maintain these surplus schools and the sale of these properties will clear up some funds for them to spend on other surplus schools. In addition, for those two sales, the outstanding state debt for those buildings will be paid by the purchaser. So, just wanted to make those two notes. Again, we stand by our report and do not oppose the sale of property.
Okay, and that was 200602 and 20-0585, correct?
Those, those notes were for both of those, but for all five, please? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Committee? Next, the Law Department.
Good morning, Madam Chair. This is Vic Turvolo for the Law Department. There are no legal impediments to the passage of these bills.
Thank you. Department of Planning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Laurie Feinberg for the Department of Planning. We support all these bills. 0576 will help a major redevelopment in East Baltimore. 0579 will create a usable lot, development lot in West Baltimore. And as was noted, we do have some comments on, in our report on 0585, the former Lake Clifton Senior High School property. The companion bill, 86, is for the Valve House. But I'd like to bring to attention the, in our memo on 85, the high school. It's sort of an unusual situation in that the high school property line is actually an oval. And in discussions, the illustration is actually on the second page of our memo. I couldn't figure out how to do this without a map. But the, the park property is more rectilinear and in the discussion of the sale and surplus, there are sort of these two, for lack of a better term, leftover triangles of land that are on a separate parcel that were intended to be sold along with the former high school property. They are technically not included in this bill because they are on a separate lot. So I don't think the Committee can fully address it at this point, but I wanted to put that on the record, that the intention was clearly to, again, for lack of a better term, sort of square off a property line for the redevelopment parcel. Those conversations have been done in conjunction with Recreation and Parks. They will keep their basketball court and there's been discussions about the radio tower, but we would like that noted for the record. On 60, again, hopefully the drawing makes sense. It's a little tricky to explain. On City Council Bill 602, again, we support that for all those reasons, but would like to note that we agree with Finance on the caveat as far as the debt, but maybe more importantly, the, the lot includes an athletic field that has not been used by the school but has been used by the Cold Spring Community along Tamarind Road. And the intention was to exclude that athletic field along Tamarind Road in the northeast corner of the school property and keep that under the jurisdiction of Recreation and Parks. Yet the bill shows the entire property being surplus. So our recommendation is that there be a subdivision prior to sale so that the city can retain the athletic field while still selling the, the majority of the school property.
Yes, I think all parties are.
I know the Councilwoman's familiar with that.
Yes.
Right, I know, Madam Chairman, you're very familiar with that. But, you know, and it may be, again, I don't know if law wants to weigh in on this, the authority to sell is being asked for the entire 18 acres, but the intention to sell is only the lesser amount and we don't have the exact acreage. So I think it might be wise to note in the bill that there is no intention to sell the upper athletic field. It's not, it doesn't have a meets and bounds or a property description.
Thank you.
And that, those are our reports.
Department of Housing.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our bill reports in support of all five of the pieces of legislation. 200576 and 200579 are both companion bills to legislation that we heard and was voted favorably earlier this week. As far as the surplus of city-owned schools and properties is concerned, it's worth noting that DHCD is frequently involved in the process of coordinating and promoting the sale of city-owned properties in conjunction with planning and other agencies. And that's done through an advert, an online advertisement of expressions of interest and requests for proposals. So just want to thank the brother and sister agencies for everyone's work around these pieces of legislation.
Thank you, Stephanie. Department of Transportation.
Good morning, Madam Chair. This is Liam Davis with Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill reports, specifically 20-0576 and 20-0579. We are favorable and the remainder of the property sale bills, the surplus school properties as well as the Valve House, we stand by our bill report, which, our bill reports, which is no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Department of Real Estate. I think we have Walter Horton on. And Jim, and Jim Knight.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members. Jim Knighton from the Comptroller's Office on behalf of the Department of Real Estate. The Department of Real Estate stands by its bill reports for all five bills, which is that we support all five pieces of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions thus far from the Committee on any of these five bills before we move to any public testimony on these five bills? So if there is public testimony, use the raise hand button or we'll call on you. So I do see a couple raised hands. And now I just see, let me see, they must have taken it down. Let me check and see if there's any for these, this is for the five sale of property bills. I don't see any raised hands on those bills, so. Okay, and looking. Hello, Chickway?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. My name's Chickway Anjoku. I'm with the Cold Spring Community Association where this property resides. Hopefully you've seen a copy of our letter. We are very much in support of the redevelopment of the Roland Patterson School site. Our interest is mainly to see it redeveloped with housing, institutional uses, open space, and potentially retail and office space. We've seen that at least in one presentation from the applicant, and so we hope that the city will work to make that so. And if for any reason it can't happen in that manner, that it comes back to the city in some form for a discussion or replanning in some form.
And then we have one other person, I think that's going to speak from the same property. Karen Bullock?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for taking the time to hear from us. We are very excited about this project. We've actually met with the community twice. A lot of the concerns that Mr. Chickway has brought up, it's actually in our proposal, in our plans, and we're actually going to meet and most likely succeed with the community is looking for. We're excited to get started. We're looking at this to be a model, not for just this one site, but for, you know, to change the community and give some positive things to Baltimore. So, we, we're just excited to get started.
Thank you so much. And then I see one other hand raised. Nate? Go ahead.
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the Committee. Thank you for your time. I'm also here to speak briefly about Bill 0602 for the Roland Patterson School. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of the Waldorf School of Baltimore, and I just want to add my support for the sale of city property bill with the amendment mentioned by the Planning Department. Waldorf is one of a number of users of the existing fields along Tamarind Road in the Cold Spring Newtown community, and we look forward to continuing to be able to use those. So I just second the amendment requested by the Planning Department, just to note that the sale of city property will not impact the existing vault fields. Thank you.
Okay, and just for clarification, it's a caveat and not really a voting amendment.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If the Committee, if the Committee prefers, we would support it as an amendment as well, either way, as the Committee sees fit.
Here, any questions from the Committee? We're ready, we're moving on as is. Do I see any other, are there any other hand raised for any of the other, wait a minute, let's see something. Okay, that's not important. Any other testimony, public testimony for any of the other bills? Seeing none, I think we're ready to take, oh, someone else popped in. Brian Fojiki, Fojiti, sorry for mispronouncing your last name. Brian, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm testifying in regard to one of the other bills, the 200631, Electronic Smoking Devices.
We haven't gotten to do that one yet, so hold on.
Yes, ma'am.
We're just doing the sale of property right now.
That's fine.
Okay. Any other test, public testimony for the sales of property? Seeing none, will, the Committee will start their vote on these sales of property. And we'll start with Bill Number 20-0576, The Former Bed of a 13-Foot Alley and 20-Foot Alley. Do I have a motion?
Move. Vice Speaker moves.
Move by Rysinger at a second.
Second by Costello.
Second by Costello. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Rysinger?
Yes.
Yes. And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you. That bill will move at the next council meeting. The next bill is Bill Number 20-0579, Sale of Property, Former Bed of a 10-Foot Alley. Do I have a motion to move that bill?
So moved.
So moved by Costello, second. Second by Stokes. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Rysinger?
Yes.
Yes. And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you. This bill will move at the next council meeting. Bill Number 20-0602, The Sale of Property, 4701 Greenspring Avenue, AKA former Dr. Roland Patterson School, Number 082. Do I have a motion to move that bill?
Vice Speaker moves.
Costello second.
And Costello second. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Rysinger?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you. That bill will also move at the next council meeting. Bill Number 20-0585, The Sale of Property, Lake Clifton Senior High School, Number 40.
So moved.
So moved by Costello.
Second by Councilman Stokes.
Second by Councilman Stokes. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Rysinger?
Yes.
Is it yes? And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Is it yes? This bill will also move to second reader. I mean, well, this bill will also move it at the next council meeting. And Bill Number 20-0586, The Sale of Property, Lake Clifton Gate House. A motion to move that bill?
Vice Speaker moves.
Second by Councilman Stokes.
Motion moved by Councilman Rysinger, second by Stokes. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Rysinger?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes? And this bill will move at the next council meeting. Just a two-minute recess, just to, to get all the people that, you know, set up that are ready for the excise tax bill. Give me two minutes. Okay, now we're ready to move to Bill Number 20-0631, The Excise Tax, Electronic Smoking Devices, For the Purpose of Repealing Current Subtitle 27 Tobacco Tax as Abrogated by Function of Law, Establishing an Excise Tax on the Distribution of Electronic Smoking Devices, Setting the Rate of the Tax, Defining Certain Terms, Authorizing the Director of Finance to Issue Certain Regulations, Providing for Collection of the Tax and Payment of Interest and Penalties, Providing for a Special Effective Date. This bill was introduced on October 19th, 2020. The sponsor, the bill was sponsored by Council President Brandon Scott. And we also have an amendment that's, basically it's a technical amendment that's going that Kalen Young is going to, the Legislative Director, Kalen Young is going to talk about, and I think you're going to also have Mr. Boston will probably make a comment. So before we get to that point, we're going to hear from the agencies, but I just wanted the Committee to be aware that that was coming. And we'll, so we'll start with the agency reports on this bill, and that will be the Department of Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pedro Ponte, Revenue Director, representing the Finance Department. We are in support of the legislation that is up for discussion today. We didn't have a lot of information out there, other than Montgomery County used Montgomery County experience to make, to come with our fiscal impact. We estimated that about 13,000 individuals in the city-based and health department information are users of electronic smoking devices. Based on that information, we understand that's going to take a while to realize the actual revenue, but we came with around $388,000 net of what we are anticipating, the need for some full-time employee to manage this program as well. So that, that, that numbers what we, that will be our net fiscal impact for the city. Again, we are in support of the legislation. We understand that are multiple reports opposing to the legislation with very important aspects for consideration, but we believe this is a good policy and it's a good opportunity for the city to move forward with this type of, of tax policy. Again, the only jurisdiction that currently does that is Montgomery County, and we would like to piggyback on that and move forward with this, which is a growing industry as well. I'll be happy to answer any question in my house.
Any questions at this point from the Committee? Thank you, Pedro. Now we'll move to the Law Department.
Good morning again, Madam Chair. This is Vic Turvolo for the City Law Department. The city has ample legal authority to pass this bill, and the Law Department sees no legal problems with passing it as amended or as drafted.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from DePaul Nibber with the Health Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. DePaul Nibber, on behalf of the Baltimore City Health Department. We noted in our bill report that there are many different ills associated with vape products, specifically with regards to nicotine and the development of the mind. But with respect to this bill, as it is an excise tax, we take no position and we actually defer to the Department of Finance on its implementation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the Health Department? The Baltimore Development Corporation.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Matthew Kachere for the Baltimore Development Corporation. BDC stands by its report and supports the legislation.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, I'll, um, Mr. Kalen Young, did you want to talk about the amendment? We'll do that first before we go to public testimony.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and thank you to the agencies for your reports. We appreciate it. Um, this is a simple amendment. It adds the word liquid, um, on page two, line 27. Um, we received this amendment from Mr. Frank Boston on behalf of his client. Um, it was presented as a friendly amendment. Uh, so, uh, Sam, if you could, uh, allow Mr. Boston to, uh, speak to the amendment, and we defer to the committee's wisdom on whether to accept this amendment.
Okay. We're gonna let Mr. Bos, Mr. Boston in? Hold on one second. Mr. Boston, are you there?
Madam Chair, I'm happy to speak to this amendment if, uh, Mr. Boston's not available.
Okay. One time. Oh, okay. Hello, Mr. Boston?
Hey, I just don't know how to, I'm not technically savvy, but thank you.
You're on. Did you want to, uh, we want to hear more about the amendment?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I'm Frank Boston III. I'm here to be here at half on Greenleaf LLC. Uh, this is a technical amendment on page two. At the, next to the last paragraph, you refer to it as, uh, liquid vape products in this, and, and under the inclusions, uh, portion of the bill. If you go to the next paragraph, um, it, and it serves the exact same word so that it's consistent in front of the word substance. That's the amendment.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee on this amendment? Thank you, Mr. Boston. Um, now we'll go ahead and move to other public testimony, and there was a hand raised. Nate?
Yes, I'm including. You have a whole property.
Hello, hello? Hello?
I believe this is the last bell, Madam Chair.
Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you're, you're on for the excise tax now.
Um, good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Brian Foytik, and I testify on behalf of the National Association of Tobacco Outlets, a national retail association that represents more than 60,000 stores, including many in Baltimore. I testify in regard to bill 200631 that would create a new excise tax on nicotine vapor products at the rate of 30% of the wholesale price. On behalf of our Baltimore members, we oppose the tax. However, if the committee and council are intent on creating a tax, my comments today relate very much toward the best way to structure one that minimizes harm to business and maximizes return for the city. In the last couple of days, our executive director sent an email to the committee that included a draft amendment that would change the tax from a 30% wholesale tax on liquids and hardware to a 15 cent per milliliter e-liquid tax used by many jurisdictions. The amendment ensures that the tax is applied to the nicotine-containing liquid, not to the separate devices that contain no liquid and no nicotine. It does so in a way that allows Baltimore and Baltimore businesses to compete effectively with their, her neighbors. Delaware, North Carolina, West Virginia, and other locations apply a per-milliliter tax, just like all jurisdictions do for cigarettes. Another example, governments don't apply excise taxes to the pipe used to smoke tobacco. They tax the tobacco you put in the pipe. The same should apply here. If this bill were enacted in its current form, I can pretty much guarantee that almost all device purchases will no longer occur in Baltimore, but instead be driven to neighboring communities or online. Market research demonstrates that consumers won't just leave Baltimore to purchase vapor products, but they'll also purchase food, beverages, and household items outside Baltimore. It's not good for Baltimore businesses, Baltimore neighborhoods, or city revenues. Our members rely on tobacco sales for an average of 36% of total in-store sales. These essential businesses are already suffering because of the pandemic, experiencing losses of 45% in gasoline sales and up to 20% or more in other sales. The tax structure in the original bill would devastate these businesses, resulting in layoffs and store closures. In some neighborhoods, like, these stores represent some of the few locations where neighbor, nearby residents can purchase prepared foods, beverages, and other items. If you decide to move forward with a tax, we very much appreciate your consideration of the 15 cents per milliliter tax amendment for the reasons stated above. Please keep in mind that in the last year, the government has implemented significant changes in response to concerns about youth vaping. Age of purchase was raised to 21. The FDA banned flavored pod products and ordered flavored disposable products pulled from the market. Most significantly, on September 9th, manufacturers were required to submit a pre-market tobacco application for every product and product variation in order to allow these products to remain on the market, while FDA scientifically reviews the applications. This has already eliminated many products from the market and will continue to eliminate more through 2021. The most recent federal data on youth vaping demonstrates that it's finally decreasing. We should pay attention to what the numbers show going forward, but these policy changes should be afforded time to work, and they may already be working. In conclusion, thank you for the opportunity to share our concerns, and thank you for your consideration of the amendment replacing the 30% wholesale tax with a 15 cent per milliliter tax on nicotine e-liquids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, Sarah Price.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Hi, good morning, Chair Middleton and honorable members of the committee. My name is Sarah Price, and I am before you today on behalf of the Maryland Retailers Association. We have already shared our concerns with you in writing, so I will keep it brief this morning. Electronic smoking devices are a tobacco cessation product that can change lives, and restricting access to them through the use of a prohibitive tax is harmful to adults who are trying to modify their behavior in a self-led manner. To that end, we would support the amendment to this unique bill that would instead impose a tax on the liquid nicotine solution used in the smoking devices at a rate of 15 cents per milliliter. We understand that the city is under stress right now as revenue has been heavily affected by the pandemic, and we would urge the committee to consider the proffered amendment. Thank you for your consideration, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Kirk McCauley?
Yes, um, my name is Kirk McCauley. I'm with, um, WMDA, represent service stations, convenience stores in the city of Baltimore and in Maryland. I'm also representing MAPDA, the Mid-Atlantic Petroleum Dealers Association, today, uh, and they have the same concerns with 200631 that we do. Uh, the bill's intended to raise money, would only drive sales into other counties. Uh, Baltimore City is not an island at, uh, at Rundle, Baltimore County. Other counties surround it. Uh, very easy to just buy the product over there. The, uh, also would drive illegal street sales. Right now, we have, uh, street sales on tobacco, uh, because there's so much profit in it. And, uh, these people on the street don't ask for no ID, uh, don't collect any taxes. They buy their cigarettes from out of state, bring them in and sell them, make good profit. The profit to be made on, uh, ESD products with this 30% excise tax would enhance their sales. They would start selling them regular. They do now, but then not as much because the profit's not there. The profit would hurt, uh, the sale in the regular stores, enhance the sale of criminal activity. The Health Department should look at that because these people don't ask for no ID on the street. They'll sell to anyone. They don't care whether they're 12 years old or 30 years old. The bill would bring crime to the scene and an honest retailer would suffer. Uh, due to COVID-19, stations lost up to 8% of their fuel sales initially in the early days of the shutdown. We've come back to being 30 to 40% down right now. Uh, stores have lagged inside with the traffic declining. Governor Hogan did what was best for the state on November 10th of this week by limiting the Oxy费 at retail locations and asking all employers to work from home where feasible. He also ordered state agencies to telework 90 cents to employees, which will hurt our stations. Sales and excise tax on EDS would only add to that loss. Products, um, also lost for the ancillary sales when them people come in to buy that ESD product. Unlike a sales tax, an excise tax is collected at the sale to the retailer, substantially adding to their inventory costs that dealers cannot afford. The city should be helping small businesses survive, not putting extra cost and higher taxes on those that are struggling. Help us keep our business local, not drive it away. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. Fred Parsons Jr.? Fred, if you can hear me, um, I think you have to maybe call in because you, you seem not to have capability, a voice capability. There seems to be a problem the way you have come in. Is there anyone else that, um, wants to testify on this bill? Any other attendees? And I see a hand up, Laura Hale. Laura Hale.
Hello, good afternoon. Or good morning, rather. Uh, my name is Laura Hale. I'm the Director of Government Relations with the American Heart Association. We stand in full support of this bill as written, and thank you, Chair Middleton, and members of the committee for hearing me today. Um, we stand in full support of this legislation. We really think that it will make a difference in, um, stopping youth making rates. I'd also like to note for the committee that electronic smoking devices are not a cessation device. Um, the FDA has not approved them as so, and making such claims is false. Um, these devices are dangerous for your health, and not only will this be a wonderful tax, um, it has, um, as written, um, it will make a huge difference, and we thank, uh, the sponsor for putting this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Beck, okay, Debbie Robbins.
Hi, my name is Debbie Robbins. Uh, Fred Parsons, just in case you can't get on. We are members of the, um, MATCD, which is, um, a community of tobacco, candy and tobacco wholesalers that are servicing the Balt Washington market, where our family-run business is. There's only four left in the state right now. We are the ones that do supply most of the independent, um, retailers that are going to be affected by this tax. So we are opposing the bill the way it is written, as you have heard from other people today, and would like a tax base rate on the product of 15 cents per millimeter. I sent a letter of five, but I think we've all conceded that 15 cents is an easier way. Montgomery County has lost a tremendous amount of sales. We are actually located in Montgomery County, but their retailers, their business, has lost a tremendous amount of sales of vapor products by the legislation that they have passed. And I think you need to look at that and maybe reach out to them to say, how much were you getting, and now what are you getting? Um, especially with their, their menthol ban. People are still going to use this product, and, uh, as we've learned in the past, banning is not the way to go, and collecting a fair tax to the end user is a much better way. At a 30% wholesale, it'll keep going up with price increases, whereas our neighboring counties, um, will not have this tax. Plus, what our neighboring states have done, and it's easier for us to, to do this, is to mirror, again, what Delaware has done and, um, North Carolina, Virginia, and West Virginia. So this does not put a, a burden on wholesale to collect the tax for you. It's actually putting a burden on the retailers and then your end users who actually live in your city. So that's who's really affected by this. This is not a health issue. As, um, we all talk about, everybody knows the health concerns. This is just a tax issue, and we hope that you would really consider going on a rate of 15 cents per millimeter and really go back and look at this bill. And again, look at Montgomery County, their loss of sales. And that doesn't help anybody. When you lose the sales, you lose the tax. So that's what I'd like to say. Hopefully Fred will speak again, and hopefully he's on the line, and, uh...
Thank you for your testimony. He does not have audio, um, so you can, could you please pass the word that he can turn in, uh, his written testimony?
Yeah, I will. So this is CCC wholesalers, Be Green, Century Distributors, um, are all Maryland-based, but McLean, Cormark, Hackney, and Cooper Booth all come into this market and, uh, service these, the retailers that are getting the product.
Thank you again for your testimony. Um, there, are, is there anyone else? Frank Schilling, you're on.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and, uh, committee members. My name is Frank Schilling, and I'm, uh, speaking on behalf of Royal Farms, uh, stores based here in Baltimore. We operate 240 locations in five states. And, uh, I do want to amplify a bit on what some of the previous speakers have, uh, spoke to. Um, my, my major concern in opposing the, the bill as written is really more of one of public health. Uh, certainly, our business will be hurt by the tax. There's no doubt that sales will, uh, bleed out from Baltimore City into adjacent counties. Uh, fortunately, I have stores in Baltimore County that will benefit from that. So my situation's a little bit different. My risk will be mitigated a little bit by virtue of the number of locations that, that we, uh, are fortunate enough to operate. Uh, that being said, uh, the folks that are immobile or are frankly too poor to, uh, go out to the counties to do their shopping are going to be left with those higher prices, and, uh, I would be concerned about that. I think that drawing any, uh, corollary with Montgomery County to Baltimore City is a little bit fraught because of the income disparity, uh, between, uh, the jurisdictions. Um, we have some experience in, uh, in excise taxes with, uh, nicotine delivery, uh, systems. Specifically, uh, we operate in Pennsylvania. That state has a 40% tax. And what we've seen there is not only a tremendous reduction in the amount of vape products that are sold, but more problematically, from a public health standpoint, we've seen a corollary increase in the amount of combustibles, cigarettes primarily, that we sell in that jurisdiction. So while we would all agree that, uh, vape products are not, uh, healthy or not beneficial in any way, shape, or form, they are in fact less risky based on the FDA guidance and their continuum of risk that they use in assessing various products. Uh, and, and as a result, any decision that would reduce an inherently less risky product uh, and would drive additional use of a more risky product like cigarettes needs to be looked at very, very carefully. I am in favor. I know that the city needs money. I know that the city needs money. I certainly can understand the desirability of taxing these products. I do believe that a tax rate based on a per milliliter basis is a more logical and acceptable approach to this. I will tell you that neighboring jurisdictions have taxes based on per milliliter of anywhere from five cents in Delaware to six and two thirds cents in Virginia to 10 cents per milliliter in New Jersey. So the 15 cents per milliliter proposed for Baltimore is obviously a significantly higher rate than neighboring jurisdictions, but nonetheless is a far better and more viable alternative than the previously proposed 30% on wholesale. Those are my thoughts and again, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you. Is there a motion to move the amendments?
Let's take a move. Chair, I'd like to move, and my understanding was there was two different amendments, one from the President's Office and one for the Law Department. Is that correct?
There's one from the President's Office on behalf of Mr. Frank Costello.
Yeah, I'd like to move that amendment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. That amendment moved by Councilman Costello. Do I have a second?
Vice take a seconds.
Second by Bryce Singer and to take the vote, Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray.
Yes.
Is a yes and Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Bryce Singer.
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
So that was for the amendment. Do I have a motion to move the bill as amended? A motion to move the bill as amended?
Vice take a move.
Costello seconds.
Okay. Bryce Singer did the motion and Councilman Costello second favorable with amendments. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Yes, and Councilman Bryce Singer.
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Stokes is a yes. Is, did he say yes? Councilman Stokes? Are you there? Councilman Stokes? Is having a little technical difficulty. Is a yes. Thank you, I heard you. This bill will move, hello? This bill will move to the next council meeting. And now we have the last bill that we can get straight for and that's Bill Number 20-0626, Water Accountability and Equity Act Modification for the Purpose of Clarifying Tenants' Access to Programs at the Department of Public Works Protecting Against Conflicts of Interest by Employees at the Office of Water Customer Advocacy and Appeals and by Hearing Officers and Their Overseers at the Environmental Review Board Providing and Specifying Data Collection Metrics by the Office of Water Customer Advocacy and Appeals Clarifying a Customer's Right to Dispute Determinations by the Department of Public Works Before the Department, the Office or the E C B Deleting the Director of Public Works or the Director's Designee from the List of Members of the Committee of Office Oversight and Replacing That Member with the Mayor or the Mayor's Designee. This bill was introduced on October 5th, 2020. The bill was sponsored by Council President Brandon Scott. And what we're going to do is hear agency reports with any questions from the committee and then we do have some public testimony as well. One of the people with a public testimony. Councilman Stokes, yes. Yes?
Chair.
Yes, can you hear me? I hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you have a question? We're on, we're on the water accountability. You're, I can't understand that, which is, I can't understand what you're saying. Councilman Stokes, are you there? Okay, while he's trying to get something together, we'll go ahead and move on. So I was saying that there is, I think one of the attendees has a power, a short PowerPoint, but we'll do that during public testimony. So we'll start with the agency report and on this bill and we'll go ahead and start with the Department of Finance.
Good morning, Madam Chair and committee members. I'm Dorothy Reed, Deputy Chief of Revenue Collections. Finance stands by our report and defers to D P W since the legislation impact their operation.
Okay, you stand by your report as favorable?
Yes.
Okay. Department of Law.
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Hillary Ruley for the Law Department. We submitted a report that approved the bill with amendments. We've looked at what the advocates have sent in response to that and our understanding is that the Council President will be introducing an amendment that will replace our amendment number two, but the rest of them should go forward. And if the committee needs any more detail on the report or any of the comments, just let me know.
Okay, thank you. So approved with amendments. The Health Department, a comment from the Health Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Our testimony may not have been submitted just yet. Regardless, we have no position on this bill. We were supportive of the original bill itself and we support the aims of this bill as well. Thank you.
Matt, are there any reports from the Office of Human Services? Matt Stegman?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I believe that all of the reports that I have seen have been transmitted to the committee and any that we find to be missing, I will track those down and get those to you for your files as soon as possible.
Thank you. And the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stood by the original, we supported the original legislation and with this amendment, we stand by our report and defer to the Department of Public Works.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is Matt Stegman from the Mayor's Office again. I apologize. I think that, so the Mayor's Office of Human Services no longer exists, that's the entity that's been split into the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services and the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. I think that referral may be left over from when the Water Accountability and Equity Act was originally taken up, back when it was first introduced at the, you know, way back at, you know, whenever it was introduced, I think it was referred to that entity and it may have just been something that carried over to this new bill.
Thank you, Matt. And then I also see the Inspector General on here. Is there a representative from there? Are they going to, Ms. Cummings' office, is she going to submit a report? Matt, do you know if she's going to submit a report?
No, ma'am, I'm not aware whether they will be submitting a report or not.
Okay. So I do see the Director of Public Works and I'm sure you have some comments, Mr. Garbar. Did you want to go now?
Sure, yeah, I can go. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I'm Matt Garbar. I'm the Acting Director of the Department of Public Works. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. And again, we've submitted our report on this, so I'll be, I'll be very brief. I know that there was an update that we provided a couple of months ago on this where we outlined some of the issues to full implementation. We have been working very hard at looking at what we can do in the interim and we have come to some ideas and some other concepts. A couple of the issues that are in the, in the legislation that will still put some issues or cause some problems are the individualized calculations for water bills, the front loading of discounts so that money is provided to customers at the very beginning of the year, the issuing of checks through the Finance Department and the Bureau of Accounts Payable and Payroll Services. And again, I think we mentioned just the, the operational issue of providing discounts to tenants who do not have a water bill in their own name. And that was just the, the major issues that we weren't able to find any major solutions to. We definitely want to work towards that. What we have been looking at are what we consider to be some creative solutions to, to implementing the most, the lion's share and these most significant portions of the bill. We believe that if there's a way to tie the discounts to a tiered approach based on income level, so 50% poverty level, 100% poverty level, 150% poverty level and 200% poverty level and use those sort of as a rounding, rounding income to those levels and then using sort of what the average consumption of water would be per person or per household based on the meter that they're, that they're using. We believe that we can implement those tiered approaches to providing different discounts based on income, which, which we believe is the overarching intent of the bill to provide more assistance to those who truly need it. This is something that is implementable in our U Mac system. It's something we believe we can do and it wouldn't be tremendously onerous to do that. There would be some rewriting of the systems and some development of new coding language and other issues to, to our system, but it's something that would be easier to do and easier to change than, than individual calculations for every single person who enrolls. So we support the Law Department's amendments and as for this bill, I just offer all those comments to talk about the implementation of the bill, but in terms of this specific bill, which is looking at modifications and some changes in dates, we are only asking for one amendment and that is the bill before you says that you're looking for 10 days after passage of the bill for us to send notices to all water customers about tenants' rights. We would respectfully request that that be changed to 60 days. The reason, the reason for that is that we have a billing cycle of 15 different batches of bills and depending on where this bill were to pass in that billing cycle, it may take up to two months if one cycle had already been sent out to get to the next month where that billing cycle would have, would have occurred. So we believe 60 days would ensure us, ensure that we can get all of those water bills printed with that information that would be required from the bill. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I wanted to be brief and make sure that the committee and others who wanted to testify had ample opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's go back to the Law Department. I know that you also had an amendment. Did you want to talk about that amendment to the committee?
Yeah, no, the Law Department's report has seven amendments to make it legally sufficient. The second one, I believe, the administration, or I'm sorry, the Council President is introducing a different amendment number two and we're completely fine with that.
Okay. So on that note, Kalen, Mr. Young, did you have anything to say on that amendment?
Sure, Madam Chair. The Law Department's report was met with a response report from the advocates who I believe are lined up to speak a little later on. One of their amendments is this one, which is now shown before us, which replaces Law Department's Amendment Two. Hillary and I spoke and she is, as she stated, okay with this amendment. Otherwise, we will be accepting the Law Department's slate of amendments.
Okay, thank you. Any questions at this point from the committee to Mr. Young or the Law Department and their Hearing none. We're going, I think it's time to move to the public testimony. And we'll start with Mary Grant. Your name is up first. Please say your name and who you represent and give your testimony, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairwoman Middleton and members of the committee. Thank you for holding this hearing today and for your ongoing support for addressing Baltimore's water billing issues and ensuring that all residents have access to affordable water through the Water Accountability and Equity Act. I am Mary Grant, the Public Water for All Campaign Director at Food and Water Action and a member of the Baltimore Right to Water Coalition. Our coalition urges you to support this ordinance, modifications to the Water Accountability and Equity Act. We have suggested alternative amendments to address the Law Department's concerns, as my colleagues Zephyr Shaw and Jamie Lee will discuss further. This ordinance is intended to get the city back on track to implement the comprehensive water billing solution that the Council supported with its unanimous passage of the Water Accountability and Equity Act last year. As you are aware, in July, day before the law was set to go into effect, Mayor Young issued an executive order to delay its effective date until 30 days after the end of the COVID state of emergency. We recognize the serious constraints that the pandemic has placed on D P W. However, the economic and public health consequences of COVID have only added urgency to provide water billing relief for our communities. Now, as COVID cases are growing exponentially again and families are still struggling to make ends meet, the Council should act to support this bill to set the city back on course, to ensure that no family worries about affording their water bill or struggling to correct a multi thousand dollar error by D P W. And despite the pandemic, water rates increased by nearly 10% in October. The bill before you would require by the next scheduled rate increase in July, D P W must set up the water affordability plan that you passed last year. It will give the incoming mayoral administration time to properly implement the act while providing key benchmarks for D P W to stay on track, while ensuring that no family loses water service over unaffordable bills or suffer late fees during this delayed implementation. Again, we urge you to support this legislation and our alternative proposals to the Law Department amendments and we want to express gratitude to the Chair Middleton, the committee and Council President Brandon Scott for your ongoing work to help execute this water billing solution to provide relief to Baltimore families. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do want to recognize Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, not a member of the committee, but a very interested person in this bill.
Thank you, yes.
Did you want to make any comments before we move to, to the rest of the public testimony? Did you want to comment on this bill?
No, I just think it's important and overdue and I'm, I'm here because I want No, I just think it's important and overdue, and I'm here because I want to just buy and help it get itself free, free at last, free at last.
Thank you.
And thank you, and apologies for being late, but I had a community meeting. I was
That's all, that's understood.
Thank you.
Understood.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. So again, with the public testimony, you'll hear two beeps, and make sure your hand is raised, and then we'll recognize you to speak. Is there anyone else from the Water Accountability Group that wants to testify? Okay, I see Cody Montag. You're on.
Yes, good morning, Chairwoman Middleton and members of the committee. I am Cody Montag, Senior Counsel at the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund, Inc., and researcher for LDF's Thurgood Marshall Institute. I'm the author of LDF's 2019 Report on Water Affordability entitled "Watercolor: A Study of Race and the Water Affordability Crisis in America's Cities." I want to thank the Committee for this hearing today and the Baltimore Right to Water Coalition for inviting me to testify today in support of CB 200626, the Water Accountability and Equity Act Modifications Bill. LDF is the nation's oldest civil rights legal organization. In 1967, we filed Hawkins versus Shaw, the first-ever lawsuit challenging a town's discriminatory provision of water and sewer services under the Fourteenth Amendment. Today, we remain committed to ensuring that Black communities have access to safe, affordable water. In just the last year, we filed two federal lawsuits in Cleveland and Detroit challenging those cities' water lien and water shut-off policies under the Fair Housing Act and the U.S. and state constitutions. In those cases, we allege that the city's water policies discriminate against Black residents and fail to provide sufficient due process protections to customers. In my 2019 Watercolor Report, I explored the water affordability crisis in Baltimore and its impact on the city's Black residents. I determined that rising water rates in the city, which just increased by another 10% last month, have a disproportionate and detrimental impact on Black families in Baltimore. While water is generally considered affordable if it does not exceed 2% to 2.5% of a household's median income, I found that some Black families in Baltimore pay close to 9% of their incomes on their water bills. My report also explored the Department of Public Works' decision in 2016 to eliminate a hearing process for Baltimore residents to dispute their bills and express concern that customers have been left without critical due process protections. The issues raised in my report have undoubtedly only been heightened during the COVID-19 pandemic, which has reinforced the importance of affordable, accessible, and clean water to ensure the health and safety of all. Given the impact of Baltimore's water affordability crisis on its Black residents, LDF supported the passage of the Water Accountability and Equity Act, which provides for income-based water billing and other essential customer protection measures, including establishing the Office of Water Customer Advocacy and Appeals. We have been dismayed that implementation of this law has been delayed over the last several months. Now more than ever, Baltimore must ensure that its residents have access to affordable water and to a meaningful mechanism to challenge incorrect or unfair bills. The Water Accountability and Equity Act Modifications Bill provides for strong, realistic timelines for implementation of this critical law and will ensure that all Baltimore residents are treated fairly with respect to their water bills. For these reasons, LDF supports the passage of this critically important bill. Thank you.
Thank you, your testimony. And then I see Aaron Greenfield.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the committee, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we, I'm here. You, we have some concerns with this bill. We understand that, let me go through a couple of those concerns. First is, and I think it's being addressed by the Office of Law's amendment with respect to Section 7-3A through 1, A-1, 1, Roman Number 1A. We agree with the Law Department that the modification of existing leases is unconstitutional, and a modification should occur at the renewal of the lease. So we would support any amendment along those lines. We would urge deletion of Section 7-3A-1, Roman numeral 2. This is cumbersome, unworkable, overly burdensome for city landlords. It actually exposes landlords to unwarranted litigation risk because it requires us to provide the Water Department with private tenant information, which could be a violation of a tenant's privacy rights. We know that other utility providers like BGE does not require the landlord to register its tenants. In fact, BGE provides the landlord with the ability to utilize its web-based system to key in transfers of service for rental addresses as tenant occupancies turn over. And then lastly, well, not lastly, but Section 2-1, capital E, is just unworkable. If a tenant fails to pay a water bill in full, it ultimately falls to the landlord to protect their property. Under the current DPW policy, again, the current DPW policy, a water bill may not be adjusted more than once in any three-year period. In this case, a tenant, regardless of tenant turnover, by the way, in this case, a tenant may want an adjustment, in which case they may get the adjustment, and the landlord is therefore locked out of any additional adjustments for a three-year window thereafter. And then, lastly, we would just urge the Committee to look at delaying the effective date of this bill because there's a lot of moving parts, and we'd encourage giving us, making sure the Department offers education that we can get out to our members and make sure that we comply and are aligned with the law. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good, this is Zephyr Shaw from Public Justice Center.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairwoman Middleton and members of the committee. My testimony will focus on the tenant provisions in the bill, and I wanted to start out by just talking about what protections from the WAEA has enacted in January of this year, basically where those protections stand today. And because of the indefinite suspension of that ordinance, essentially, the written lease provisions set forth in the ordinance are on hold. So tenants are not able right now to have assurance that their responsibility for payment of water and sewer will be set forth in an express written provision of their lease. They don't have the assurance that their lease will provide them the Public Information Act Designee status, which, under the WAEA, allows the tenant to easily access account records at DPW. And further, they don't have any written provision in their leases, you know, by statute that would set forth what the landlord's calculation for shared water and sewer costs would be among tenants in a multi-unit property. Further, they don't have the assurance of getting a copy of the DPW bill. And finally, they don't have customer status as provided under WAEA to request services, crucially, for the emergency discount program that the mayor created during this pandemic. And so this bill is really a response to those challenges that tenants face in the absence of the WAEA's protections. And so what we're seeing is, while the ordinance is suspended, many tenants who need emergency assistance from DPW are not able to get that help because landlords are either refusing to participate in an application process or simply ignoring the tenant's efforts to have their application accepted by the department. So if the landlord's participation or express wishes are not presented to DPW, those tenants' applications are not going anywhere. They're simply denied at the front end of that process. What this does, in the context of the pandemic, is just add to the likelihood that tenants are going to face breach of lease evictions, which are not covered by the CDC Order Halting Evictions or the Governor's Order Protecting Tenants Against Eviction During the Emergency. We don't have a rubric in place right now. I think that's really the point here, where tenants can access the application process, the records, copies of bills, the dispute resolution. And so what this bill does is it provides four ways to ensure that tenants have access to what the WAEA provides. And so the first thing here is through the moved-up effective date, it fast-tracks the lease requirements under the WAEA so that by the beginning of next year, tenants will have those lease provisions. Secondly, we have attempted in this bill in Section 7-1, A-1, Roman Number 1, sorry, 1, 1, to close the lease renewal loophole. And so this goes to what Mr. Greenfield was just suggesting. Right now, the way the WAEA is written, a landlord could simply continue to renew a lease that has the water obligation specified in the written lease but doesn't comply with all the provisions of the WAEA, and continue to renew and renew and renew as needed to avoid providing, for instance, MPIA Designee Status for a tenant. The modification or execution of a new lease, as required by this bill, does not actually pose any contracts clause violation. It's not constitutionally defective simply by causing landlords to correct and make legally sound their leases. Just saying it's a constitutional defect doesn't make it so, and the Law Department's memo and the testimony, Mr. Greenfield, only say that there's a constitutional defect without actually applying the Supreme Court's two-step test for whether a government may cause a modification of an existing contract. We've put that actual analysis in our memo, and again, we haven't heard, the Council's unlikely to hear a sound constitutional argument against this provision. Thirdly, the bill is trying to require landlords to name a tenant as an additional party on the account, not to harm the privacy of tenants, but actually to make it easier for tenants to get the services, such as discounts through BH2O. It's just the custom that we know that tenants who are named as additional parties at DPW rapidly get assistance, whereas tenants who are not named as additional parties often have to take additional steps which may not actually materialize. And so there's already a practice and custom in the industry which DPW enables, where landlords can unilaterally provide tenant information to DPW for this process. And we haven't ever heard of privacy concern in that context where the landlord wants to do it. I don't think there's a valid privacy concern of providing a name to DPW so that tenants can get ready access to their billing information, consumption information, and application processes for discounts. Finally, the bill prohibits DPW from denying tenants' requests for assistance where the landlord is refusing to participate or withholds its participation. And the Law Department's amendment on this issue, we found a flaw with because it would continue to allow landlords to just ignore the process because that amendment only focuses on the refusal of participation. And as the Council President's office has presented, a sort of tweaked Amendment Number Two, that I think would address our concerns. So we've offered a language to fix the Law Department's Amendment Number One so that the modification or execution of new lease requirement would not upset, so to speak, actually compliant leases at the time that the WAEA becomes effective. We think that addresses the Law Department's concern. And finally, this is my last comment. If we remove altogether the additional party registration, where again, we're just weakening what tenant's access is. If a tenant is at a directly metered property and the landlord is obligating that tenant to pay the water bill, there simply isn't any, I think, rational basis to not have that tenant listed as an additional party while they're a tenant of that property. This is just common sense. It's just an added, I think, benefit to both parties that there'd be direct billing, or so, direct access to account services for the tenant at that property. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Committee at this point or any agency? If not, we'll...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. I heard several critiques of the Law Department's analysis. I'd like to hear from the Law Department.
Okay, there's one more person, one more attendee that has to speak, and then we'll circle back and hear the Law Department. Because I agree with you, I agree with you on many of those concerns that the Law Department, you know, they're addressing, trying to remedy. And Mr. Young, I see you want to comment on that before we move to the last person?
No, no, move to the last person, but when the councilman gets his response, I'd like to also just level set on how we'd like to move forward from the President's office.
Okay. All right, so the next person, the last person, is Jamie Lee. You're on.
Morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. So thank you so much. I am Jamie Lee, an associate professor at the University of Baltimore School of Law and a member of the Baltimore Right to Water Coalition. I greatly appreciate this opportunity to comment on the bill's effect on the Office of the Water Customer Advocate and to strongly urge the Committee to reject Law Department Amendments Four and Six as fundamentally undermining of the law's protections and of due process. And we do not make these requests lightly as our responses, our written responses to the Law Department's other proposed amendments state. Although we disagree with various arguments, we are willing to compromise on other points to keep the bill moving. And in doing so, we are relying on the Council President and his steadfast support of this law and his commitment to implement the law robustly in ways that serve the people of Baltimore. But certain Law Department amendments we must oppose, however, because they fundamentally undercut the law. Some amendments, as you already heard, would deeply harm tenants. We also object to the Law Department's Amendment Four, which would allow DPW to simply hire existing DPW employees as advocates. Why is this important to us? Well, imagine if a customer calls an advocate to complain, and the person they are complaining about is the same person who answers the complaint hotline. This is the fox guarding the hen house. And we understand that the Law Department notes correctly that the city charter requires merit-based hiring. We believe that this, in fact, supports our argument because an essential qualification for being an advocate is that you cannot have a conflict of interest with your own job description. This is critical to the advocate being effective at their job and to earning back the trust of the public. We therefore strongly urge the rejection of Amendment Four. Regarding Amendment Six, we strongly urge adoption of our proposed language to clarify the timing of appeals instead of adopting the Law Department's language. The Law Department stated no legal objection to this provision other than consistency, and we agree with that, and our counter-proposed language addresses that one objection fully. Why the specific choice of language is so important here is that the Law Department amendment would delete an incredibly important clarification, which is that if DPW just never responds to a customer, the customer still has a right to appeal. And as you know, interminable delays by DPW have been common for years. These delays must not be allowed to continually deny people due process. Therefore, we strongly urge adopting the Coalition's language for Amendment Six instead of the Law Department's proposal. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak today.
Thank you for your testimony. And at this point, I would like the Law Department, or Hillary specifically, if you would first... And at this point, I would like the Law Department or Hillary specifically, if you would first respond to Councilman Costello, member of the committee, and then if you want to explain Amendments Four and Six and respond to Ms. Lee and, and the committee about four, Amendments Four and Six.
I'm happy to do that, Madam Chair. I just didn't know if you wanted to hear from Kalen first or not.
Okay. Kalen, are you on?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Did we want to hear from you first or let the Law Department respond to Councilman Costello and respond on, and explain Amendments Four and Six? Or you're, you want to go ahead and talk?
Yeah, I think I'll talk. It might, it might give us a little bit of perspective on, on where we want to go and then maybe change if we need to hear from the Law Department. Specifically, the primary purpose of this legislation is to be responsive to, you know, the mayor's executive order, which delayed implementation of the original bill. So, you, a significant portion of this legislation has to do with, you know, timelines of implementation of the, of the law, which we know has not been implemented yet. We don't dispute the law, the, the conflict between where the advocates are with regard to some of the interpretation or how things should go versus where the Law Department is. But it's the President's position that those substantive arguments, the place for that was at the original bill passage. This modification is a modification, again, in response to the implementation or the lack of implementation by the current administration and setting up a future administration for implementation. In drafting the bill, we did allow for certain substantive things to be added into the bill because, you know, as the advocates felt that these things needed to be added, we allowed for it to be put in because there's a second bite at the apple. But where there is conflict, especially given the timing of this term and the, you know, the fact that we only really have two council meetings left, it's just not enough time for us to be able to have that type of a dialogue going back and forth to figure out who's right, who's wrong on constitutional issues. And so, where there was, where, where there are those substantive conflicts, we are simply going to, you know, defer to pulling that out and dealing with what we felt was the primary purpose, again, which is those timing of implementation. Again, hopefully that would, that's, gives you all some clarity with regard to kind of where you see the, the conflict of, of what the advocates want versus what the Law Department wants. But again, President's Office's primary purpose is that implementation time period. And, and if there is conflict, we prefer that it just be removed so we can get that most important piece done.
Okay. From the committee, did there are any questions or comments to Mr. Young?
So...
Yeah, I have one when the committee is done. First, we'll hear from Councilman Costello and then Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just to understand correctly, the amendments that the Law Department and the advocates disagree on are not going to be moved?
Well, the Law Department's amendments strike for provisions in particular, right? And the advocates would like certain provisions to remain. There's constitutional arguments, for instance, on the First Amendment that the Law Department is presenting to strike that section. Because of that conflict, the mere fact that there is a conflict means we're going to go with removing it. Because the primary purpose of this legislation is to modify timelines for implementation as a means of the future mayor showing that he is going to be implementing this bill and providing for those timelines, those, those benchmarks, so that way we can all be held accountable to that in the law. But again, where there is conflict, the mere fact that that conflict is, has, has arise is enough for the President to remove it from this bill because it's not the primary purpose of the bill. Primary purpose of the bill, again, is that implementation timeline.
So, thank you, Kalen. So, I guess, maybe I didn't ask the question the right way, so I apologize. So, I'm looking at the amendment for this, there's one amendment proposed for this bill, correct? Or am I missing?
No, there, there's, there are several amendments in the Law Department's report, which they...
And then there's one from the President's office, correct?
That's correct. And that's Amendment Number Two, which, it replaces rather the Law Department's Amendment Number Two. And that was provided to us by the advocates.
And there's one from D P W, is what?
Right, which is separate, which is separate.
Right.
Yep. Okay, so hey, or Madam Chair, if I may, just, I think I'm almost understanding this. So, Kalen, Council President's Office Amendment Number One replaces Law Department Amendment Number Two. Okay? And then, D P W has one proposed amendment, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so what is, what is the Law Department's position on Council President's Amendment Number One? And then, after that, please tell me what the Law Department's position is on D P W Amendment One?
Mister Chair, we approve both for form and legal sufficiency.
Excellent. Okay. And I'm, and the last question is, are we, are we entertaining any of the amendments from the advocates that, any of the other, let me start over.
So, that's...
Is the universe of amendments that we're entertaining today just the Law Department's with Council President's modification to Amendment Number Two of law and D P W? Or are there other amendments that are being entertained by the committee? And I apologize if that question is too early in the hearing, Madam Chair.
So, yeah, that's why I think it's good if the Law Department explains Amendment Four and Six because that's where the advocates, advocacy, advocates seem to have their questioning.
Right, right. So, can we do, is, is now an appropriate time to have Law Department?
Well, let's hear what Councilwoman Clark, I guess you, you want, you want me to go ahead with the Law Department, Councilwoman Clark, or you want to put your statement?
Yeah, well, I have the, I mean, I'm, where you all are, where my colleague is, especially with regard to Amendment Six. I think it's very, you know, I'm the one that wanted to have an independent hearing finally someplace in this process, and that's Environmental Control Board. So, Amendment Six, I, I would just argue that if, lots of times, the Water Department doesn't respond at all. I mean, it's not the people that work there, it's just when it gets to, let's just say, sometimes the, the Water Department, they get too busy, they don't respond. And the idea that the client still has the right to appeal to the Environmental Control Board, whether they got a response or not, as a trigger, I think is very important because, and, and it's not the first time it's been raised. I know it's a small thing, and that's why I'm raising it now because you just need, just needs to clarify that there's this, the right to, there's a timeline, but if it doesn't get triggered because there's no response, the clock is kick, is ticking. And they will get their chance to go to the Environmental Control Board, which will be their first opportunity to be in front of a neutral body. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just throw that out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, at this point, can we hear from the Law Department?
I'm happy to, Madam Chair. This is Hillary Ruley on behalf of the Law Department. And I'm going to go in reverse order and start with Amendment Six because that plays off of what Councilwoman Clark just discussed about the timeline. The Department's issue is that what, the, the language in the current bill as well as the advocates muddy the waters because the current bill allows for a ninety-day timeline and, I'm sorry, the current law allows for a ninety-day timeline. And the current bill makes it vague. It's unclear what's needed. So, there just needs to be clarity. We don't have any position on, you know, which, which number of days is correct or how you want to, to handle it. But there has to be clarity because as written now, the bill conflicts with existing law. So, that's, that's the issue there. I have looked at the proposal, the counterproposal from the advocates, and it still conflicts with the law. For example, the current timeline in two dash twenty-one B of the current law conflicts with their proposed language. So, again, we don't have any policy stance, we just want it to be consistent. We read, as, as a matter of, of, of interpretation, if this helps, we read the current law as allowing people to go to the E C B at any time. But, you know, that's, if that, if the committee wants to clarify that, that's fine, just like anybody can go to court at any time. This isn't going to impact that. But if the council wants to clarify the language, we don't have an issue with it. But the, the current bill before you, as well as the advocates' chain, you know, response to the Law Department amendment still leaves the ambiguity. So, that is Amendment Six. And turning quickly to Amendment Four, that is about hiring. And while there's a lot of talk about D P W hiring, under the charter, D P W doesn't really do that. It's the city's H R department and the civil service framework. And so, the problem is not that the advocates' policy isn't a great one. They make excellent points. The problem is the city council can't pass a law that tells how hiring's going to happen when the charter gives that power to someone else. And so, it's just simply a conflict with the charter. There is nothing that prevents the hiring of independent and impartial people. It's just that you cannot pass a law to do that because it violates what the charter already gives to the H R department and civil service.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilman Costello, you have any other comment?
No, just to say that Hillary provided very coherent explanation and I don't, it doesn't sound to me like, at least for Amendment Number Six, Law Department doesn't have a position on the number of days. I think she's clearly saying defer to the council on that, and it seems like the council's doing what the advocates want. So, if that's the case, then, you know, what Hillary's saying about Amendment Six makes sense to me. There should be specification in there. We should not be passing laws that are broad or vague or ambiguous. And with respect to Amendment Number Four, I believe that Hillary is correct, that, that power is authorized in the city charter, and the city council does not have the authority to vest that power somewhere else. So, again, Hillary, I appreciate it, that, that explanation of, of laws, positions on both amendments makes total sense. And Madam Chair, I would ask that you bifurcate the amendments so that we vote on those amendments separately and individually when the appropriate time comes. Thank you for your consideration, Madam Chair.
So, you're, you want to vote on, you're requesting to vote on all, the Law Department's all seven amendments individually or just the number six? You're, you have to unmute yours.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. So, going back to the original thing that Kalen was helping me through to understand here, I'm, I'm in support of, of what we had for six and four. So, I...
Okay.
So, my question is if I'm, if I'm getting confused here, but are we, are we entertaining amendments that compete with six and four or are we in a...
So, I want to ask the Law Department if we can do a pack, the package of amendments from D P W, the President and the Law Department. Can we include, make a, can we make a motion to include, can we make a motion of a package of amendments that include the D P W President and Law Department?
Well, I think we need to, I think we need to consider the President's amendment last because that makes modifications to Law Department's Amendment Number Two. And what I, I think we're all in agreement on, correct me if I'm wrong, is we want President's office's changes to Amendment Two. So, what I would offer up is moving them as three separate packages, starting with the Law Department, then D P W, then President's Amendment Number One, which impacts Law Department Number Two, and then go from there. So...
That's acceptable, Madam Chair. Just, you know, to be clear, the intent here on the record is to not, to, to basically overrule Law Department Amendment Number Two with the Council President's Amendment. So, the, or that Councilmember Costello proposed would work.
So, Hillary, if, if I understand correctly, is Law Department's preference to move the entire law package or should we move the law package minus Amendment Two?
Either way will get you there, but I, I mean, I think we've all sort of kicked, you know, kicked this...
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah.
I think we know the intent, yeah.
Beat, beat the dead horse. So, Madam Chair, I would, if there's no further testimony, I would move the Law Department package with the exception of Law Amendment Number Two at this time.
Okay. Boy, did you confuse me. So, we're moving the Law Department's amendments with minus number...
Two.
Minus amendment, minus...
Not, yeah. But can I ask a question or, no, four, no, two's fine. Four.
No.
Four is what we're taking out?
No, no, that's not the motion. The motion is to move the Law Department's package with the exception...
Of Number Two.
...of Amendment Two. And the reason, and the reason for that...
Because he has, yeah.
Because the President has an amendment that we're going to introduce to address that point. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, if, if I can just, sorry to be butting into your committee, but Amendment Six, that's going to be in the package that gets voted on, the Law Department.
Yes.
That's staying in.
Yes.
And it says that, and, and a point was raised, I'm sorry, I haven't been able to be here for the whole hearing, but that, anytime, as Hillary has said, you can appeal to the Environmental Control Board. You don't have to go through this process because there will be people who are already in dispute, who have qualified, they're, are in this program, and they've been at it for years. Is there, is, is there a, a way to have an amendments in, as part of this that says that the, you can appeal at any time to be heard by the Environmental Control Board? Practically speaking, you'll need a record in your hands, so you can't just come off the street and go there, but you don't get caught up in waiting for a process that doesn't happen. So, I mean, so I just ask that the committee consider this as we're putting these amendments together, that somewhere it should say this in proper language, as Hillary has mentioned.
Hillary, did you respond to Councilwoman Clark before we take, start taking the votes on these amendments?
I'd be happy to. As I noted before, there is no Law Department objection to changing the timing that's listed in the current law. The objection from law is simply that if you throw in the section dash nineteen C of the bill, it conflicts with section two dash twenty-one B. So, it, it makes what, what's, what's on the books now less clear. So, if you want to make it more clear, we would have no objection to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, there's a motion on the floor to move the Law Department's amendment except for Amendment Number Two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. So, there's, the motion was moved by Councilman Costello and second by Councilwoman McCray. And now, we got a, we got a... Chair Middleton, yes, Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Okay. Now, and now we have D P W's amendment.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move D P W's amendment.
Do I have a second?
Second by Councilman...
Second by Councilman Stokes. Chair Middleton, yes, Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes? And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
And then now we have a motion to move President Brandon Scott's amendment.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Costello, second.
Councilman Stokes.
Councilman Stokes. Chair Middleton, yes, Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Reissinger?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
So that's all the amendments. Is there a motion to move the bill favorable with amendment?
So moved, Costello.
So moved by Councilman Costello, second.
Councilman Stokes, second.
Second by Councilman Stokes. Chair Middleton, yes, Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Reissinger?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes? This bill will be moved to Monday's council meeting. And these hearings are adjourned, and the committee will present these bills to the full council at the next council meeting. Thank you all for being patient. Thank you, the attendees, for your testimony, and everyone have a good day.